I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to our new meeting night and time for 2022. The first thing on the agenda before we get started with our meeting is a public hearing on the build, operate, transfer for the structure at Pirate Park. With that, we'll open the public hearing. And with us this evening, we have Greg Marks, who is president, CEO, founder, and all the above of GM Development, who specializes in these types of projects across the state. So Greg, if you don't mind, maybe just give us a little bit of a background of the project. We've been working together for quite a while, so welcome. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me. As Mayor said, my name is Greg Marks. I'm with GM Development. My company's in Springboard, Indiana, which is just about an hour north of here, off Highway Three, almost straight forward. We've, I've been working underneath this BOT statue wall for, since about 2008. So we've done about 100 projects underneath this statue, very familiar with it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you or anyone from the public might have about the law, or how it's been used in the past, or how we work on this project. We responded to a public request for proposals in July, I believe it was July 12th, that the city had advertised in the newspaper. And it was, it was a great RP that was very detailed. And so there was enough information that we were able to respond with a bid at that time to the drawings that were proposed. And so our, our response price that we submitted was, for the building, was $996,500 in July. And then that included the site work for the building itself, but then there was site work that was not designed, that was outside of the building. And so the way that we responded to that was that we simply just hired a local site work contractor to do that, that site work, and that we would charge no profit or anything, just, just the open book as the entire rest of the project would be. And so since then, we've been working for several months now on that. And so we believe we now have a good grasp of what the site work will be outside of the building. And that contractor is essentially $100,000. It's just fairly below, at least $99,700. And so you, everyone has probably been reading the newspaper about inflation, and it is, it is terrible, there's no doubt about it. And so the building definitely costs more now than it did in July of last year. But if you read my proposal, you also saw that we made a really big deal that we would never charge a change order, we'd never be coming back to you for more money. And so even though the building costs quite a bit more now than it did, we are sticking with our price. And so that original bid is still good. If you do decide to move forward with this project today, no matter what happens, we will not be coming back to you for more, for more money. In the 100-plus times we've done projects under this statute, we've never had a GM ever, and we can promise you it won't be the first. We feel like we've got a really good field now, especially having been able to work with the committee for the last several months on what the project will be. So feel very comfortable moving forward with you if you do decide to move forward with this project. If you have any questions for me either now, or I know this is just a public hearing, Mark, so if you prefer to wait until the city council meeting agenda, I'm happy to answer questions then as well. We're also happy to answer any questions from the public at this point. So, thank you very much for your time.
Counsel, any questions for Greg at this time? In your package, you've received all of his documentation he submitted in a memo for me as well. Before we close the public hearing, obviously we have to ask the public, but Philip Dywork, Director of Tourism is here as well. We've been, the city and tourism have been working very closely together to try to find what our long-term plan is for Pirate Park, which includes a lot of tourism. So Philip, I didn't know if you wanted to speak on that really quickly.
Sure.
Not that we're in a hurry, but just your thoughts.
Yeah, Philip Dywork, Lead Director here at the Business Commission. As Josh said, you know, we've been partners with the city. This is a seller project also. I've been Touring Director since the beginning, '19, but I started working with the seller group in 2017, I think, as a representative of the main street at that time. So this was a project that predates Josh's tenure as mayor. It's a good project, something that we did, you know, countless surveys and public meetings and public hearings and interviews with people, sit down with groups, duration meetings, to kind of figure out what, what communities wanted, needed. A community agreed space was, was something that we really passed for. You know, talk about partnerships and collaborations, the school system, donated that property to the city, that the city's working to, you know, the whole seller group to get this project done. I'm really proud of, excited about. We were awarded an Indiana Destination Development Grant, so they bought $100, $200, $30,000. We were one of four finalists, the two that were not awarded funding were New Fields, which is the Museum of Art in Indianapolis, and the Jewish Museum. So this is a project that the state level recognizes, respects, appreciates, and sees as something that's important regionally. You know, I talk a lot about how we can grow as a community. I think in youth sports are two of the biggest ways to do it. Youth sports is probably more, at least immediately, financially rewarding as a community. So I think this is a kind of a no now, it's like a project, I think, could be really good. I'm excited to see if we can work on it for a long time. And I hope you all work on it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Philip? Okay, thanks. Are you planning to stay for the meeting too? Okay, perfect. Anybody from the audience here to speak on this topic for the public hearing? Hearing none. Counsel, any other topics you would like to discuss during the public hearing? If not, we take a motion to close the hearing. Motion's been made by Daryl. Is there a second? Seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, today, I'm sorry. Today is Tuesday, January 11, 2022, the time being 6:37. The meeting of the Greensburg Board of Works is called to order at this time. Please silence electronic devices to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Amy Kane.
Here.
Rick Ensweiler.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Byetta McKenzie.
Here.
And Daryl Holy.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from the December 6th public hearing. Any edits, additions, or corrections? If not, we take a motion to approve that as presented.
Still moved.
Motion's made by Rick. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Stained.
Two abstentions. At the December 6th meeting, 2021 as well, any edits, additions, or corrections? If not, take a motion to approve those as presented.
Still moved.
Motion's been made by Daryl. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Stained.
Two abstentions. Old Business is ordinance 2021-26, which is the stop sign change that was brought up last month. Anybody have, Ron's here this evening to answer any other questions you may have. As far as I'm aware, we've received no public feedback or comment.
I've not had any.
Does anybody, and we've made no changes to anything presented, so this would be second final reading? Anybody have anything?
I take a motion, we pass 2021-26 on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thanks, Ron. First item under New Business, Brian Robbins, Director of the Tanner County Greensburg Economic Development Corporation with a Tax Abatement for Experience Act. So Brian, good evening.
Good evening. We have with us here tonight both Jill and House from Experience Act. If there's any questions on the project, this project had submitted an application for a tax abatement, I believe in November, was granted a four-year, and they decided they were going to try to resubmit and did resubmit to the Tax Abatement Committee. And we reviewed it last night. Jamie, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Based on the resubmit, the tax abatements recommendations, you know, after reviewing the guidelines and having discussions, we're recommending that we revoke the previous tax abatement and then recommend on the new submittal, a five-year tax abatement. That would be our recommendation to the council.
May I ask what the difference was?
They added personnel, a head count.
Jamie, can you say that again into the mic?
Oh, sorry. They added a head count to the, the new submission. That was the only difference. And it was a difference of $25,000 annually on the salary. That was the only, I think, substantial change to the new submittal.
As Brian mentioned, Travis Corman, owner of Experience Act, is here, and Jill Hart, who has been our liaison and business contact, or also if you have questions for them.
Or if they would like to speak, I think.
Yeah, if counsel, anything? Okay. Any further questions or conversation? Again, the committee's recommendation was for five years, which has an estimated value of?
$95,000 over, over five years?
Five years.
My only recommendation to you is if you are inclined to follow the recommendation from the abatement, that you do it as two separate motions. A motion first to, to revoke the prior.
Which is 2021-11.
2021-11.
And then the new one would be 2022-1.
2022-1?
Yes.
Fine. So if, if there's no objections, then I'll make a motion that we, we strike down or revoke, I don't know if the right wording you want to use, revoke Resolution 2021-11.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And, and I would make a motion that we pass ordinance 2022-1, or Resolution 2022-1, recommending a five-year abatement on that submittal for Experience Act.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Byetta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Travis. Good luck. Up next, Chief Stermer.
Come to you a little bit different than what was asked originally. We were going to ask for an executive session to meet regarding the fire station, and we've sort of have defined that now into the creation of a working group. This working group would entail myself, the mayor, a member of my department, a member of the Board of Works, and one to two members of City Council, interested parties, in meeting probably within the next two weeks to discuss the fire station project. We are now about a month out from when our facility study was presented. We've had time to read and digest that information, and we're ready to make the next move, whatever that move shall be. So a couple things, if we can, if you guys can talk among yourselves, one, two people to meet during the day, probably during the week, you'll be meeting with parties of architects, potential build, operate, transfer, REEDY Financial, and those things like that. The first big thing is, is obviously location and land acquisition. So besides needing names, I guess, I am needing some guidance to get this off the ground as, do we stay where we are at, or is the council willing to engage in land purchasing? And we don't know what that looks like right now, but are we willing to take that step to, to look into that realm, knowing that there is going to be a cost involved?
I mean, I guess, this is just me thinking out loud, and this is some of the things I was thinking about earlier, was, I, I think the first step from the working group is to identify those three proposals they came back with, and then make a recommendation on which one we think we should be looking at, right?
I thought that was done at the, there was a vote of confidence down at the meeting for their option, to my knowledge.
I, I think.
Which doesn't, I mean, it was just.
Council meeting or board meeting?
I think, I think we talked about it, and then we realized that there were some costs that weren't included in there, like the, if we moved to a different site, there was no, we didn't factor in, would we have a price if we demolished the building, right?
No, that wasn't there.
There were, I thought you said there were.
I thought the, the, the storage structures and the, the trailers were included in the cost of, I want to say it was A and B, options A and B, yes.
I thought there were a few things we discussed that were missing from the proposal.
Was it included in the one to relocate to a new site, though? I think maybe that's what.
The one to relocate to the new site, we don't need storage, we don't need.
Well, right, but I think that was the difference.
We're not establishing the task force, let the first order of business of that task force be to meet, decide which one of the options we think is the most viable. If, if it happens to be build new, come back to the council next month with a recommendation on which option, and if that option is build new, and the recommendation for where that location would be.
That's fine. Anything to keep this moving, looking, working with REEDY and, and the bond scheduling, we have to, we have to have some, some decent decisions made at the end of the first quarter, and we're almost halfway through the quarter. So any, any way that we want to do this, as long as we're making forward progress. And I can take care of some of those other questions that you may have, Jamie.
You know, I'm just, that's my only concern, is I think, I don't know that we, in my mind, I don't know that we fully flushed out which idea was the best idea, right? I think we had three different options. We looked at it, and we, we saw pieces of it, but I don't know that we really got to dig down in the details.
Is the council willing to take the task force's recommendation?
I think.
So I think, is, I mean, yeah, part of the, part of the question maybe, right, in, for the discussion from the task force, is are we able to initiate conversation with landowners? Because it's hard to make, and we can have conversations about pricing and locations and executive sessions. But is the council willing to entertain the idea of purchasing property? Because then the task force can start identifying property, because it's one of those things where if we come to you and say, this piece of property is great, but they want a million dollars an acre, well, that becomes unrealistic. So is that fair, Chief?
Absolutely, I think that's, yeah.
The goal with the land question is, are you willing to entertain purchasing property?
I think we're willing to entertain it. I don't think we're committed to saying, let's do it, right?
For sure, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that if this, there's too many unknowns at this point.
We're not saying we're going to go buy it. It's just, we'll listen to the idea, okay? And get numbers. Okay. Is that fair, Chief?
Yeah.
So we don't have to have an answer from who wants to serve on that, or the two that do. Kevin has volunteered. If somebody else would like to, with the Board of Works, we're limited to one other member because of the quorum, but I'm not a member of this board, so there can be two of you. So if somebody else wants to volunteer, if you want to arm wrestle right now.
Or if you just want Kevin to be your spokesperson, but whatever works for you guys. Like I said, we'll be meeting during the day.
They don't, I will.
I think you would be excellent, being a retired fireman.
Absolutely.
We will support you.
He did raise his hand, I saw it. That was an exercise, that's what he's doing. All right, so Kevin and Rick then, and then the Board of Works will get us their recommendation or their, their member, and then we will probably plan on meeting that first week of February, then we'll be in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Building Commissioner Sarah Hamer with Building Ordinance 2022-01, Inspection Fees.
I'm not asking for some tears for anything, so. Okay, before you, you have ordinance number 2022-1, and amending ordinance 2014-14. The, number one, after the table of fees, we are not changing any of the permit fees or inspection fees, but in number one, after that table of fees, we've had with a new inspector, Mr. Hellmink, going and doing inspections, some issues we've been having are the number of re-inspections that he is going to. People will call for an inspection, he goes, it's not right, it's not according to code. Sometimes he has to go back two or three times. In our ordinance, it has always, well, not always, but from years before, stated that we could, we have the power to assess a reinspection fee of $100. We've never had to do that before. We feel now is the time to do that, because we, we receive, when people come and get their permits, they pay for the permit fee and the inspection fee. When he has to go out and re-inspect the same thing two or three times, because it doesn't mean code, or it's not completed yet to be able to be inspected, we're not taking any more funds in to be able to pay him to go do that. So in that section, some of the wording that was changed was that the reinspection fees will be, it will be $100 per reinspection. So if he gets called out to go do an inspection, it's not ready, he gets, that's $100 that they have to pay. If he gets called back out there, it's still not ready or not to code, they would have to pay another $100 reinspection fee. So there will no, be no final inspection done or certificate of occupancy until those reinspection fees are paid. So that is the part that was changed in that section. That's the only thing that was changed, and the fees and that kind of thing weren't, but it was all part of that ordinance, so.
Questions for Sarah? We, because this is an independent contractor, the building inspector doesn't work for the city, they are paid on a per-inspection basis, including mileage, travel. That's why this become more apparent of.
Why we need to do this.
He's holding some accountability.
Yes.
Which is then resulting in multiple trips.
$100, is that normal what he is getting paid?
That $100, that has always been in the ordinance, in the previous ordinances before this. I haven't changed that amount that was set before. We have just never implemented that, because we've never had the need to. But we have a very competent building inspector now, and who is very up on codes and knows what to look for, and we are finding that many times he's making multiple trips for the same thing and having to go back. And I think that, that may seem a little steep, but I think that we, it needs to remain that, in my opinion, to people to realize that, hey, we're serious here, and you need to get this right, or you need to get people to, or can do the quality of work to get the job done then, so. I mean, we're paying him mileage and his time to go back out there, because he gets paid per inspection. And when they pay that permit fee and inspection fee, when they get their permit, that would cover that. That would cover those inspections, but it doesn't cover anything beyond that, the multiple times he has to go out to do the same inspection, because it's not to code or it's not done.
An additional fee is $175, is that correct?
The, what do you mean, the additional fee of?
Initial inspection.
The initial.
The initial fee, it varies on what kind of build it is.
Some of these.
So if you look on the table in this ordinance, you'll see the column for permit fees, and then the inspection fees. So it depends on what kind of permit that they are getting as to what the cost of the inspection fee is.
And there are how many inspections in the initial fee? He goes back, what, four times, three times?
Well, again, it depends on what kind of build there is. I mean, remodels, you may not have electrical. Some things you'll have electrical, some things you may not. Some things you'll have plumbing, some things you may not. Typically, I mean, with new builds, you're going to have more inspections, because you're starting from scratch, and you've got to, you know, put the electrical in, put the plumbing in, put the, put the insulation and all that. Remodels, not so much, you won't have as many inspections. And I think that reflects in the cost of the inspection fees, based on what kind of permit that they are getting.
So you're charging the extra fees if they have a, a violation of code and they have to go back?
Yes. That'd be the only time.
I think I would hope that you'd be very adamant about making sure that the people that are coming in to get those permits are fully aware of that issue.
Yes, yes. In fact, Mark has, there's been a couple, but we've been dealing with a lot here very recent, and he's told them, if I have to come back out and it's not ready again, it's going to cost $100 for the reinspection fee.
Any other questions for Sarah? Comments? This does require two readings, because it does have money attached to it. Are we willing to make a motion or accept a motion on first reading for 2022-1?
I'll make a motion, we pass ordinance 22-1 on first reading.
Motion's been made by Rick, seconded by Kevin. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Up next, the engineer Ron May with the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan.
A little over a year ago, the Redevelopment Commission became aware of a grant from the Indiana State Department of Health, granting the amount of $10,000 that could be used to develop a pedestrian bicycle master plan. So the commission applied for that money and received that grant, and earlier this year, we commissioned American Structure Point to develop such a plan. That plan involved public involvement at three or four stages through the process. It, it included public input, and as of the Plan Commission meeting last week, the final draft of the plan, y'all haven't seen it, I assume you have, looks like that, the Plan Commission reviewed the document and recommended to you to adopt this plan and to further incorporate it into the current City of Greensburg Comprehensive Plan. The idea being that as we continue to work on the new comprehensive plan, this document would be something that could literally be inserted into the new plan. So the idea is, one of the requirements of the grant from the State Department of Health was that we formally adopt the plan and include it in our current comprehensive plan. So I'm here this evening to ask you to approve the plan and, by motion, incorporate it into the current comprehensive plan. Kevin, of course, sits on our Plan Commission, and Rick also sits on our Plan Commission. They were there for that presentation. I don't know if you, either one, have anything to add?
No, it's a very thorough document. I mean, I don't remember exactly, page.
112.
It was, it was a strain on the eyes, I can tell you that. It's thorough, and, you know, like I said, it comes from the Planning Commission with a 100% positive recommendation to have it incorporated.
Is this, was this the plan that was gone over at Parks Department, maybe?
No, that was, that was the, yeah, that was the Park Department, five-year master plan, right, Brian? Brian serves on that board. Yeah.
Yeah, this is a plan for the City of Greensburg for bicyclists and pedestrians, for improvements that, a little more background, year and a half ago, two years ago, the Redevelopment Commission commissioned a capital improvement plan and program. There was a lot of discussion in that of, of trails and pedestrian facilities, and with that interest from the Redevelopment Commission and the opportunity to obtain a state. a state grant, they quickly moved into doing this. It is a livability feature for economic development purposes, and so this will give us the opportunity to look at how we can incorporate what's in this plan into our activities as we move forward and try and provide more of that livability component into the city. It also will help the city, having a plan, will help us in terms of funding for any of these kinds of projects, to be able to demonstrate that we're committed, through the planning process, to do this kind of work.
Any other questions for Ron? Or comments on the plan?
Do you have a, need to do it by resolution number, or just, you just want a motion on record that we...
Well, because it still need to be implemented into the Comprehensive Plan ordinance as it comes, or the Comprehensive Plan as it comes, the answer is no, I don't think I have a preference one way or the other. I think you can do it by motion, as long as it's reflected in the notice that you approved the incorporation.
I'll make a motion that we add this Greensburg bike plan to our comprehensive, to the Greensburg community, or Comprehensive Plan. Make the motion.
I think it would be good, Jamie, if your motion says that you adopt the plan and include it.
I'll amend it to include that.
Got it. Motion's been made by Jamie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Thanks for all the hard work on that as well. Councilman Fleetwood, you had asked in November to have a conversation about the fire truck standards, and were unable to join us last month, so it's on the agenda for this month. Per your request, I did invite the Washington Township Trustee to attend the meeting, so the floor is yours.
Well, I'm almost wanting to table it till such time that he can attend, because his input is vital to, I think vital to the discussion of those standards and those two trucks.
Okay. Is that a motion to table?
Second.
Motion's been made to table by Kevin, seconded by Darrell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Amy, you have some additional encumbrances?
Yeah, so, we came across a couple more things that we need to encumber funds for. Sarah had a couple that we didn't realize, the second part of her Civic, for the, that's, I, I, it's okay, unless they have questions for you. For Civic, the software that we just got, they're also using it, the second part of their annual, or not their annual, but their initial payment has not been invoiced yet, and that's in the amount of 16,000. So she needs to encumber that much from that account. You should have, I think I had it in the folder for you, as well as, like, right after our last meeting, a bill from American Structure Point came for her, around 14,000, that she does have, but we need to encumber that to pay. Some office supplies for our office that aren't gonna come until the credit card bill, and then we just got the invoice for the 2021 bill for animal control on January 6th. But we had those funds in 2021. Yes, Sarah?
So...
Come all the way.
Okay.
I'm just talking about the new ones, not the ones from previous, so if you want to talk about the...
So we were encumbering the monies from the Comprehensive Plan?
It's still on here, I was just talking about, yeah. I just highlighted the new ones, in addition to what we already did in December.
Oh, I did notice we're done, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the ones not highlighted were already approved in December. These are just some additional ones that we came across, just at the end of the year here, that we had not had covered.
I'll make a motion, we pass the, or approve the additional encumbrances.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vieta. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, thank you, Amy. Two items that I have per the agenda, one being the general obligation bond for the 2021. I provided you all a memo in your folder that sort of lays this out. If you recall, when this conversation was being had back last year, this body asked to see a list of plan expenditures for those funds. So, that's what this is. It is a, if you support this, it is a vote of confidence that the Board of Works can start administering these funds through these high-level purchases or contracts. Does anyone, I'm just trying to honor our agreement, so that's what this is, and happy to talk about it or answer questions, should you have any. The bond total came to $785,000, which is about what we thought it would.
I just wanted to, I, I am glad to see that you included money for the inclusion park, that's a very good project, in the, your microphone.
Just, just speak up.
I just wanted to say, I was happy to see that you included money for the inclusion park. I think it's a wonderful project for the community, and that's just, I think it's a really positive thing to do.
Well, thank you, and, and obviously, that's something former Police Chief Brendan Bridges is really passionate about, the community in December raised a hundred thousand dollars for it, it was identified in our REDI application as well, but it's still a long ways to go. So I think this is a very generous support from the city to, to this project, and I'm excited to see it as completed, so I appreciate the...
You can see a lot of people from outside the county travel to Greensburg to the facility.
That's what tourism would like to see as well.
And that comes from people who have sold vehicles too, from Brookville, from Aurora area, and they're excited for it to be put in.
Okay, glad to hear that. Any other questions? If not, would take a, a support, vote of confidence that this spending plan will then be used by the Board of Works in general to expend those funds.
Salute.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we will get to work on that. And then we arrive at the second part of the Pirate Park Build, Operate, Transfer project. Again, we have Greg March with us, and also Philip, and I, I think my memo, I guess, again to you all in your folder, sort of laid out a little bit what Philip talked about, how we've been working on this project for several years. I believe we have identified responsible ways to pay for this structure that will benefit the facility, and I think the community, again, to help draw people from outside of the community without borrowing any money. It is a cash project, which I think is a really great thing for the community, and I've laid those different funds out. That does include the 150,000 dollars from the Indiana Destination Development Grant, which tourism was instrumental in helping us acquire. So are there any questions about that? If not, I'd take a motion to approve entering into a build, operate, transfer with GM Development for the, as stated, contracts and timelines that we've laid out. Motion's been made by Darrell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vieta. All those in favor, any other things? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all very much. I know that Philip and I, and Brian, and everybody's really excited to see this project really making sort of those final strides towards completion. We've already talked a little bit about the Fire Station Working Group. There is another request, I think if we could maybe have somebody from this board as well, or this council, serve on our sort of newly-formed health insurance task force. We provide great benefits to our employees for very reasonable fees, and I think that we're gonna have conversations ongoing about increased healthcare cost, and so, again, somebody that would be willing to serve in that capacity, I would, I would welcome you to join that. Two things that Jamie did point out, we do need to deem our newspaper for the year. We are fortunate enough to have two newspapers published in the city now, we have the Greensburg, the Daily News, and we have Greensburg Times, and both of them have reporters in the room habitually for our meetings, so I think that's a very good thing for our community. I do believe the law requires general circulation, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would entertain a motion to make the Daily News our newspaper, our official newspaper of record for 2021. Motion's been made by Jamie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jamie also pointed out that we typically elect a council president in January, and I failed to have that on the agenda. So at this time, I would open the floor to nominations for council president.
I should nominate Jamie for council president.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for Jamie, are there any other nominations? Jamie, would you accept the nomination?
I will.
Thank you. Thank you. We're so much enthusiastic.
Jamie, in all seriousness, Jamie does a good job, he keeps us informed and...
Chris, do we need a motion to amend the agenda, since it wasn't on the agenda?
I was just thinking through that, and yes, I would, I would ask that there be a motion to, to, a motion to amend, give me a sec, a motion to amend the agenda.
I mean, a motion to amend the agenda to voting on the official newspaper for the council and council president.
Second.
I apologize for that oversight as well.
And what I would say is, you currently have two motions and seconds, so you probably need to call the vote on the agenda first, and then call the vote on the, on Jamie's.
Is there, is there a motion to, or is there a second to amend the agenda?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, do we need to do the newspaper again? Do council president first. All those in favor of Jamie being the council president for 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, to restate the newspaper.
I'll make a motion that we use the Daily News for, as our newspaper of record.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rick, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry, and thank you, everyone. Jamie, would you like to give us an update from the Board of Works, please?
It was short and sweet. Basically, the Girl Scouts came in asking for permission to use the trail, not really a road closure, for Cookie Crumbles 5K on March 19th, which we approved. And then, Fire Chief came in asking for a promotion of three firefighters, one to Assistant Chief, one to Captain, and one to Lieutenant, to fill a vacancy in an Assistant Chief role. So, we approved that, and then everything else, we've already discussed in this meeting.
Anything else to come before the council?
One thing, even though I did make a motion to table the fire truck standards, I would ask that it be put on the agenda for February meeting, and the request for Township Trustee to attend once again will be made.
I will be sure that those two things happen. Anything else to come before the council? If not, a moment of public thanks to Amy and her office that have been implementing the new software system. It has been trying, but they are all doing well for us down there, and with that, would take a motion, so thank you, Amy. With that, would take a motion to adjourn.
So who'd?
Motion's been made by Vieta, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everyone, we'll see you next month.